Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. It is 6:33, 6:34 now. One of the items that we received from feedback from the community responses is that we should start meetings on time, so we should do that. So let's get started. So thank you for joining us this evening. This is a community meeting focused on the Nogog Hill Orchard, which many of members of the community know and love very well. This is the second of a two-meeting series, so we'll be reviewing that.
Should I have my camera?
I think it just goes to the video. So this is being live broadcast with LCTV, so we probably have some people join us at home as well, and that's what the microphone's for, so I'm going to try to project. I don't think I'm, maybe I am amplified in the room? Sounds like maybe no, I need a little feedback. Okay, great. So our agenda for this evening, we're going to do a brief recap and introduction for those who did not join us at the first meeting, so you can be brought along with that.
That's what I was wondering about.
Okay. We're all set now. The feedback has subsided, and we will go through a recap of the context, just so everyone, again, is on the same page. We'll spend a fair amount of time going through the feedback that we received from the first community meeting and a follow-up survey, and then we have the results of that summarized in what we're calling a community-based evaluation matrix for some of the decisions that have yet to be made as the process moves forward. And then we do want to go through some of those details and talk about the next steps as well. So we have a fair amount to cover. We'll go at the pace of the room, and you all can, we'll have plenty of times where we stop and pause, and you can all give questions, comments, et cetera, throughout the presentation. So let's get started on the introduction. So you might be wondering, I'm not sure if I even introduced myself to start, but I'm Josh Fiala of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We are the regional planning agency of the greater Boston area. I'm joined by my colleagues Emily Wanzur, Lindsay Randall, Javier Gutierrez, who has stepped out, and Courtney Lewis here. And so we are planners by training and provide community assistance to those within the greater Boston region. You can see that region on the map here, roughly within the 495 belt. Littleton's right on that edge, so we're out with you this evening and happy to provide this type of assistance. We provide technical assistance to the 101 cities and towns within the greater Boston region, and we're happy to do so and have done so in the past with Littleton as well. So we're happy to be a part of your community processes and help in whatever way we can. So why we're here and the purpose of these meetings really has been to convene community conversations around the orchard property, gathering feedback and documenting that feedback from you all, members of the community, with the hope to define shared objectives and criteria that will help the town to evaluate future options for the orchard. And then we also want to discuss those future options and get your opinion about how those outcomes might be shaped. So we have a presentation that we'll be walking through to guide the discussion. We do have Post-it notes on the tables and some pens. If you don't want to share verbally, we invite you to, please do get your thoughts down on Post-it notes as we're going along, and we'll collect those at the end of the meeting and combine those with all the other responses that we get. So you're welcome to share things verbally. We'll take notes of what your verbal comments are, and we also invite you to get things down on Post-it notes. I think we'll probably, given the size of the audience tonight, we'll probably just stay as one full room. We don't need to break into smaller groups to discuss, and we invite you, again, as we have points for discussion, to chime in and provide your thoughts and/or additional questions. At the end of this process, and I'll be talking about this at the end too, our culminating document will be a memo documenting our process, documenting everything we've heard, and presenting that back to the community and to the leadership of the community and providing that so that you can all use it moving forward. So last meeting, we had presented some community norms, just so we can all be on the same page about how to discuss sometimes what can be a challenging or charged topic. We've heard some frustration from the community, of course, in this process. There would be, you can see those on the screen, things like being fully present, presuming that people have good intentions in their comments and thoughts, speaking one at a time, listening for understanding, using I-statements, so things that you think, not necessarily representing that you are speaking for another group. And if you make a mistake or say something that may be offensive to someone, then you can use an oops or an ouch if that statement was offensive to you. So those are the types of community norms that we introduced. People were on board with them last meeting. We'll use similar norms for your comments and discussion this evening. But we asked in the feedback, this is one of the things we talked about both in the meeting last time and through the survey, if there were other community norms that the community would like to see. And we did get about 30 responses on that item. So you can see some of the quotes here. This will be a common feature of our presentation tonight. I'll be showing you direct quotes from the community, and then we'll be pulling out from those quotes and give you some larger themes. So these are direct quotes that your fellow residents provided to us in thinking about how meeting norms, and this is not only applicable to the orchard process, our meeting tonight, but we're thinking these could be things which could be applicable to other community processes. There are a lot of discussions, a lot of important things happening in Littleton. So if we shifted the slide which we had, which were our community norms for you, this would be more reflective of what we heard in that feedback. So these would be Littleton's community meeting norms for your community meetings, and that we would always have a virtual attendance option, like we're doing with LCTV tonight. We'd have clear communication and data for the topic at hand, a safe and respectful environment. And these are words, again, from the community members. Time limits for speakers, if need be, hoping we can all just be respectful of time, but if need be, I can start a stopwatch tonight. We respect gender pronouns, provide equal time and attention to people in the room. We have respect for others' perspectives, start and end on time. We were pretty close to that. We'll try to end on time as well. Be concise and on point. I'll try to follow that as well. Honest and transparent communication, have outreach and inclusion in our processes, and be considerate in cities. So these are from your community. This is the type of thing that will reflect back in the memo that we produce and hope that they can be useful to the community as you move forward with this work and others. All the questions that we'll be asking tonight, we do have another online survey, so people who are either at home watching this live or watch a recording, you can go to this link, or you can scan with your phone the QR code, and it will take you to the same link, and it will provide the same questions that we ask in meeting, and you're welcome to provide those through the survey. And we had a tremendous response to the follow-up survey from the last meeting, so people were connecting to this and using that, so that's excellent. So let's talk about a brief recap and context about what's happening on the property. So in our last discussion and meeting, there was discussion about the APR portions of the land, and that those APR portions of land were under consideration. A lease negotiation was underway with a tree company called Brandsfield. That lease negotiation has now been concluded, and the lease has been executed on the APR portions of the property. So that has been through the select board, and that was decided. We all have a moment for some clarifying questions.
I just have clarification on the way it's executed.
Signed.
It's been signed.
By both parties? And Mdar's approved it?
I haven't heard.
Pass the mic?
Sorry, we should take the mic over for the questions, yeah.
Oh, I have a mic, I'm sorry.
Hi. So the lease has been signed by both parties. We have not yet heard back from Mdar, but John has been speaking to Mdar directly, and I see no, I would be very surprised if they had any issues with it.
I would like some clarification as to what his conversations are in regards to Mdar and how that pertains to the lease, because is he therefore altering his management plan at the request of Mdar? Or is, and will that have an influence on the lease that we've signed?
No, the lease-
Or like what are his conversations with Mdar, so-
I think he was describing to Mdar what he was going to do and what his plans were, according to the management plan in the lease, and discussing with them, and they were, in his words, enthusiastic about it. I don't think that Mdar has not, to my knowledge, asked for any changes, and I haven't seen, there shouldn't, there will be no changes to the lease and the management plan as they were presented, because that's what we signed.
And John signed it as well?
Yeah.
And then is there certifications type of thing from Mdar to say that this lease is approved? Like how does, what's next?
I don't know. I know that they have the right to say no, but I don't know if they need to formally approve it.
Okay.
So, well, I could ask. That's a good question.
Yep, and I guess the other thing too is that if John's making clarifications about what he's planning on doing with the land, that's not actually spelled out in the management plan? And that's what Mdar's, like is there documentation of that, and if that's part of Mdar's approval?
I don't, to my knowledge, there's none, he hasn't made any changes to anything, any of his plan with Mdar. He hasn't deviated from it. He's barely started it yet.
Well-
I'm not sure I understand what you're concerned about.
His, the management plan that was presented is pretty generalized, and there's not a lot of specifics in terms of what he plans to do, and there was a lot of specifics that came out in his meeting with us. You know, like, you know, that he's going to need two years to build soil, like there's different things that came out as more specifics that were not included in his management plan. And so therefore, I'm just curious, as with his conversations with Mdar, is Mdar approving his management plan based on these specifics that are actually in his management plan?
I don't think that he's being any more, I don't know, but I don't think he's being any more specific with Mdar than he was with us.
And there's no documentation for that in what he was with us in his management plan either, so there's nothing-
We, yeah, that's correct. The management plan has not been spelled out in that level of detail.
Okay.
But it can be altered, like year to year. So like I would suspect that once we do the annual report every year, there may very well be mutually agreed upon changes to the management plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. I'm just bringing this up to everybody because I think that there's some need in terms of what's actually happening with the lease, what John Brandsfield's plans are with the property, and how do we as a town hold him accountable in terms of, is he meeting the management plan? Because it's so generalized, like we don't know where he's going to be planting, we don't know what his timeframes are for any of these things. And so this was a point that I had concerns in terms of signing a lease without, you know, goals, that we as a town-
We're recording in progress.
We as a town, and Brandsfield, it creates a tool for dialogue, to be like, oh, are we meeting these goals or not? And is there reasons that we're not meeting them because we're bumping into different obstacles, or the plan needs to be changed? So it provides a baseline tool, and that's something that I felt like was missing. And it seems like it's been a part of our conversations, but there's no documentation of it, so.
Great. Thank you for that. And just, so that's a very, sort of, I think, detailed window into the discussions that are going on, but just to maybe step back, because I feel that some of people in the audience might not be as familiar as that exchange indicated. But, so the lease is a 20-year term with two five-year extensions. It applies to not the entirety of the orchard property, but the APR-restricted portions of the property. And the discussion, the detailed exchange there is really focused on the fact that there is town oversight built into the lease, and that oversight would be through a third party over on an annual basis, but I think some of the details of how that might actually mechanically function need to be worked out.
What's APR?
Agricultural preservation restriction, excuse me. That's what the APR is. Apologize for not clarifying that. And that is the portion of the property which has to, is restricted to have commercial agricultural occur on it, and that's, the oversight for that is through a state agency, the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, Mdar. You also heard Mdar in that discussion, and Mdar is, would hold the town accountable for having that property be commercially viable farmed. And we jumped the gun a little bit, but I knew there'd be discussion, comments on this, but are there any other comments or questions, clarifying comments about the lease itself, just to make sure that we share information about that? Yes?
Well, it's, okay. Probably not really about the lease itself, but I noticed that trees have been cut down in the last couple of weeks. So is that by Brandsfield Tree Company, or is it, you know, someone with the town has cut them down?
So I can answer that. There were, there was a, a few months ago, the town cut down some trees around the house at 91 Nogog, because those trees were diseased and they were infecting the trees on the private property. And now John is removing trees, which was always part of the plan. The trees are, the trees are not commercially viable, many of them are diseased, and they are also, even if they were viable from a fruit perspective, it's not varieties that people would ever purchase. So he is going to leave many of the trees, especially along the edges of the property, as a sort of a visual, you know, representation of the orchard, and he is going to try to maintain enough to have a small pick your own, perhaps in the fall, but most of the trees are going to be cut down.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments about the lease specifically? Yeah? Just one more for the mic. Thank you.
This just brings up the whole point of, well, as folks are watching things happening on the property, if there was a spelled-out plan or understanding, you know, what John was doing on the property, then folks would have a better idea of what's happening, and also having a point of contact if they have questions, who they can reach out to, because we don't have a newspaper. Somebody asked me on Facebook, what was the update with the orchard, because they saw the trees being cut, and I was like, well, there's all these different places that you can go to, but there isn't a designated spot. And I've talked with Matthew and Mark about this being an important aspect, because all of us in town, especially that we drive by that a lot and live in the area, we're going to want to know what's going on and to make sure things are following along, because we don't want a repeat of what happened last time, so.
So I will reach out to Brandsfield and see if they'll write up, you know, a photograph for the next few months to put in the town newsletter as it comes out, so maybe we can at least get something in there, so he can read it.
That'd be very helpful, thank you.
He does a regular newsletter already for his tree company, which is a variety of things, including interesting trees that he takes pictures of. I mean, he's a nerd, so I think he would probably actually enjoy writing up information about what he's doing and where he's going with it, but that's a great idea.
Great. Well, we'll continue on and just now shift to the community meeting feedback that we've compiled from the first session, so you all can have the benefit of that, and it will inform our discussion this evening. So we did have a community meeting. The first one was on March 6th, 2024. We had a little bit larger audience in that session than we have in this session, about 40 or so. And then following, again, we had a follow-up survey, as I just advertised for this meeting, and we had a remarkable turnout for that survey. We had about 375 people open the survey. Not all those people responded to the survey, of course, but I do the same thing myself, open and click through and see what the questions are, but we had 375 open it. We had, in the neighborhood of probably 100 or so for any given question, respond and provide answers to those questions. We do, it's, I guess it's a good thing to cross Ts and dot Is, but we do check for, like, duplicate IP addresses, just so anyone's out there wondering about conspiracy theories, about ballot stuffing and things like that, we do check for those things, and we didn't see any funny business in this case, as we usually don't, but just wanted everyone to know that as well. So we can trust these results, our community members in the town, and that it's not a single member who's got these opinions. It's spread across, as you see here, 85 combined responses, both from the meeting responses and the survey responses. So these were just general questions. I'll go through these relatively quickly, because they just set the stage and context for why people were joining us, either in the survey or in the meeting. Lots of concern about the property itself, a worried observer, I think some frustration expressed about the process, and that the decisions that are made for the property have a long-lasting impact on the town, and that legacy is important. So those were the quotes, just to remind you of that. So the first slide of each of these questions, those are direct quotes from the community responses in meeting and in the survey. And then across all those 85 responses, you don't see 85 quotes there, of course. These were the themes in priority order, so the top bullets had more frequency of response amongst the 85. So we see preservation of the orchard and the land was why people are interested in participating. Support for the Nishoba Prey and Indians was the second most of why people are wanting to attend and participate in these processes. Community and local impact, interest in the orchard's future and its status in general, and then its cultural and historic importance to the town. So you can see some of those, but also process concerns around transparency in this process, being able to be involved. Lots of people have a personal connection to the property, as a neighbor to the property, or a personal connection just growing up in the area, and concerns about the future of the orchard's management, which we're hearing this evening as well. We asked people also, what question, what one question would you bring into that session? And those, here's some quotes from that meeting and the survey. What is best for the future for the town of Littleton? I think that was a common question. Some questions about why our particular meeting wasn't scheduled earlier, more soon after the May 24th, or May 2024 town meeting of last year, and the decisions around that. And again, concern for a path forward for the Nishoba Prey and Indians, that's what we see annotated as NPI, is a way to shorten that, just to clue everyone in. And what is the best outcome imaginable on this property? Some quotes for that. And you can see here, some themes starting to resonate across questions, and you'll see that as we continue. But the themes from one, what is one question you would bring into this space, that a lot of comments around the Nishoba Prey and Indians, involvement and land rights on the property, preservation and protection of the orchard and land, and transparency in decision-making processes. So those are really the resonating questions and themes from that. So we had, so in the meeting, clarifying questions. We did more of a presentation on the existing conditions of the property than in that first session than we will do this evening. We will make sure that, in the spirit of getting all this information placed in one place on the town's website, make sure that everyone can see the link to the previous meeting if you're interested in doing more of a deep dive into those existing conditions. These are some of the clarifying questions that came after that existing conditions presentation. Again, a fair amount of quotes around the Nishoba Prey and Indians, and the sort of trajectory of ownership that has occurred through, from pre-establishment of Littleton as a town, in fact. So you can see, all of these, in this case, are quotes. I don't think through our, there's some questions in here which are more rhetorical in nature, I think, and some that are probably impossible for us to answer, given our knowledge and background and context, but as I mentioned, we are putting together a memo as part of our concluding piece of this document. We will try to get a FAQ that responds to many of these clarifying questions built into that memo, but just foreshadowing that we probably will not be able to answer all of the questions, given the nature of some of them. But you can see, again, each of the questions that have been asked of those clarifying questions, I won't read each one of them, but you will see a list of them. I will mention, actually, this is, on the top of this slide, has caught my eye. We talked some about the zoning restrictions on the property, and there was questions about the aquifer zoning in particular, and we have taken a look at that, and the town's aquifer zoning overlays and watershed protection areas do not, are not co-located with these properties, in fact, so they're in other parts of the town. So those restrictions do not apply to this particular property. So then we focused a lot last meeting on the establishment of community-shared objectives and community-shared criteria, and we went through some exercises, some small group discussion, and then again, had the follow-up survey responses. And you see, our responses here are combined at 114 responses about establishing objectives in the community. And you can see, these are direct quotes, again. So again, focusing on stewardship and relationship with the Nishoba Prey and Indians, long-term sustainability, agricultural use on the property, complying with the agricultural preservation restriction. These are all objectives which the community finds to be important. And then if you look at organizing those in accordance with the frequency of how they showed up across those responses, you can see by far and away, an opportunity to recognize, honor, and return Nishoba Prey and Indians stewardship of the land to that group is the leading frequency in terms of objectives, the shared objectives of the community here. That's followed by long-term sustainability and viability of the stewardship and agricultural uses, so not wanting to see another failure on the property, as we've seen in the past, and fulfilling promises of, to honor the legacy of the land, the legacy of Littleton's agricultural history, the role of apples specifically, you know, it's on the town seal, and there's a strong history there. Complying with requirements of land, I think it's interesting to see complying with the requirements on the land a little bit lower down on this list, because that was, I think, one of the primary objectives that was driving the decisions to the point today. And then restoring, protecting, maintaining the orchard as a fruit producer. So those were the others. There were a lot of other comments as you moved down, but each of those were less frequency than these. I've got a few of them here, but they start to get a little bit lower in priority. You see, like, maybe three or four neighbors coming together, and then, of course, there's a fair amount of responses that were one-off, so a single resident thought a certain idea, but they weren't, didn't hold frequency across to other residents. So we tried to focus on those which are shared across Littleton residents, and you can see some of those less frequent objectives here. Engaging a partner or partners to manage the property, as an example, and having strict and formal oversight of the property. So you can see, some of these objectives are being met, for sure, by the current trajectory of decisions that have been made. We also talked about the criteria, so the way that we described this and facilitated the last meeting is that the objectives are the larger, broader outcomes, and the criteria are the more detailed metrics by which you would determine if it was a successful outcome relative to the objectives that were established. So the criteria are a little more specific, and we had a similar level of responses from this question in the discussion. You see, similar themes show up, so respect of sacred places, acknowledgement of the land with the Nishoba Prey and Indians, creating an overseeing body that manually monitors the site, and having previous experience operating in ag business. So those are some of the quotes. And again, we've organized this and looked at the frequency of the responses. You can see that the top criteria is to have an indigenous connection to the land, an acknowledgement and support for the NPI. Those were similar ideas, but there was some distinction there. Having the town monitor activity closely to make sure a plan is adhered to, lots of frequency there, and we're already talking about that tonight, the details of that. Experience with sustainable farm management, pesticide certification, native crops, organic farming. We clustered some of those ideas together. Some people had mentioned just a single one of those, but saw that there was a larger umbrella there of sustainable farm management. Interest in the historical background of the property, and making sure that the applicants or outcomes are consistent with that history. And that, I think this was a good one, that there would be no harm to the land, and that the resources of the land would not be stripped, and that you wouldn't have, be kind of going backwards in terms of that stewardship process. And then again, some lower-level criteria. Maintaining community access, this was, there were a variety of ideas in terms of maintaining community access, some suggesting that there be pick-your-own-access, others thinking that there would be an opportunity for some sort of educational center or educational opportunity on the property itself. Preserving scenic views, those views had some variation in terms of what people would describe specifically, but the idea was shared amongst quite a few. Protecting and conserving the soil and water resources. Pesticides could have gotten drawn in with that other previous sustainable farm management item, but this was more specifically comments very focused on pesticides and pest management. And again, we see the APR show up on this list, but again, not till later down in terms of frequency. As well as agricultural business experience, resources, and training. Then we rounded out that feedback from the first session with a more general call for other questions and comments, and we see a returning to the theme around support for and honoring of the Nishoba Indigenous people. And here you see the themes from that larger quotes that we just touched on, and these, again, are organized in priority order with the frequency. Very similar to the themes that we saw in the other questions. And then on the survey, I think this was general touched on in the meeting as we talked through and discussion in small groups, but we offered one other opportunity, another open call for what else to consider. So these were survey responses only, but the themes were, resonate with everything I've just covered. So pretty resounding and consistent feedback from the community about the themes. So I guess I did not put a pause in here, but I'll just pause here to see if anyone has any reaction or thoughts about all of this feedback we've gathered. Yes?
Yeah, so I just, a general impression here, which is that- Yeah, so, I just, a general impression here, which is that it seems that, for the most part, what people are wanting, the different things are not incompatible with each other. So I'm wondering, I wasn't part of that process, but, you know, if things were, you know, grouped as all of these could compatibly be included in a plan, you know, it seems like you'd get a large buy-in, you know? So I just, you know, am I missing something? Were some of these points actually at odds with each other in a significant way? Or did it, I mean, it seems to me like there ought to be a way to pull all of that all together in one plan.
I would agree with that. I think that the, I think they're complicated, I think the thing that I would describe as complicated is the arc of processes that were underway, and how our process overlays with that arc of processes. So I think there were, the wheels were set, are set, were set in motion and have been resolved on the Bransfield lease. And so I think that there are now, in what we're going to talk about in this meeting more squarely, is the portions, and we have a map, sorry, we should have showed a map previously, but we have a map. The portions of the property which are not subject to the Bransfield lease and the APR restriction, I do think that all the themes that we see in these, in this feedback, could be resolved, you're right, in a more cohesive manner and vision for those portions of the property. I think that the, how that relates to the Bransfield lease is another question, something that can be explored, and there, I think, from what I have heard, are open to a partnership of some kind, if that were to be, sort of meaningful address the community's ambitions.
It sounds like, yes, that would be possible, but that hasn't, nobody's specifically trying to pull that together at this point yet. There's some other priorities, is that right?
I think we, in our process, will be trying to point in a direction, but then it will be the responsibility of other parties in the town to carry that forward. So we're going to basically mirror back to the town what we're hearing through our process, but I agree, like, I don't know that there's an established party who will be tying all of the aspects of a vision together, and then putting together the plan to get to that vision.
Okay. Seems important.
I asked the question at the last meeting, how was this criteria from this meeting going to be influenced in this current lease process? And Mark and Matthew both said that they were going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong in what I say, of what I remember what you said, that they will be taking what we said at that meeting into consideration when they put the final lease together. They signed or approved the vote on the lease on March 24th. The survey didn't close until April 1st. So from my understanding with those order of events, the lease process was well underway before all of this information. And from my perspective, they were not able to take in all the criteria, as they said that they hoped they would be able to for that survey, because they voted and asked for a vote on that lease before the survey was closed. So, yes, it is very confusing, and yes, the process could have been done differently, and could have been done better. And that would be, if Matthew and Mark want to answer to that, but, yeah.
So, a couple things. One of the criteria that we were absolutely required to complete were legal requirements for how the, how the land would be operated and maintained under the APR, because we were already out of compliance, and the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources ultimately has control over the land, and could, in theory, take it away and offer it to another third party. It was an unlikely event, but the longer that it remained out of compliance, the more problematic the situation became. And so even though none of the criteria up there, it wasn't, that is almost not represented at all, that was almost the most important thing for us as a policy board that's trying to take care of things from a legal framework, which I understand is not like what we're talking about here, and that's, that's fine. But that's where we were coming from, and that's where the lease originated from. I will also say that, in the process of doing this lease, I became disillusioned with the inequity that was present, and the sort of, the way that the tribe had been sidelined. And I think it was a combination of, you know, prejudice, and cultural differences, and the status quo. So when Josh and Mark and I were talking about these sessions, I think Josh suggested that we, because there had been so much talk about the tribe, that we actually focused more on, you know, how can we be more culturally sensitive? How can we address the issues that we're seeing now in the future? And I think that it's unfortunate that, you know, this came a little bit late, but we're, this is the best thing we can be doing right now to make things better in the future. And it's not just 20, 30 years from now, when the lease is up, there are things that we can do right now, and we are doing, to try to get things started in a more equitable way.
Great.
The lease had nothing to do with the tribe, is that right?
That's correct.
I've got a lot of catching up to do. I went to the town vote where they voted down to lease the land, so, and that's the last meeting I've been at. So what you went ahead and leased the APR, and now we're talking specifically about the remaining, is it 70% or 60%?
Oh, it's, it's a little, I think it's roughly half. I think it's like 80 acres, and like 42 of them are in APRs, or something like that.
So the lease is done. We're not here to talk about the lease tonight, we're here to talk about the other half of the land.
Well, you know, John has, has said publicly that he is willing to work with the tribe, and, you know, share, I don't know, I don't know what that takes. It could be that some of the leased land is, you know, if it's not especially useful for him, it could be given to someone else. So I mean, that door isn't closed either, but I think that you're right, like, probably the most likely course is that the non-APR land is the things that we can be talking about next. Makes sense?
And you, obviously, you tried to lease everything, and you didn't want to lease all the land.
No, 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 no. We only ever, we only ever, the APR land was the only thing we ever leased. That's the only thing the town was interested in leasing. With the, yeah, with the exception of the barn, yeah.
So in the past, with the previous tenant, Charlie Auger, he actually had an agreement to lease some of the self-help land. And we actually, originally in the lease, had those as potentially things that would be included. I think that's like field two and seven. We, based on the feedback we were getting, we intentionally pulled those out of the agreement with Bransfield, right? They are not covered at all, that's what we're talking about today. Based on the feedback, we also pulled out the lower barn, which is in section, it's in six there, as something that the tribes expressed interest in. We also added clauses to the lease that we, and by mutual agreement, if Bransfield doesn't, like, if he wasn't interested in one of those fields, like, we can pull back the lease from him from that specific field by mutual agreement. So there were a lot of considerations that were put in based on the feedback. But right now, we're focused today on the non-hashed areas, basically, up there. Those are covered by the lease, right, until they're not, right? So until by mutual agreement, the Bransfield decides they don't want them, then we can do something else with them.
And then what's the status of the house?
The house is not covered by any agreement at this point. It's, it is considered uninhabitable, so we cannot lease it.
And it's owned by the town. The house and the acre and a half, or whatever it's on, is municipal property, which the town can, I think with a vote, would have to be a town meeting vote to declare a surplus, but we could sell it, we could rehab it at tremendous cost. I don't think any of the voters are going to be interested in that. So that's where we're at right now. Oh, and then, the upper barn is technically not part of the APR land. It's that little yellow square right next to number three. However, we included that in the lease, because you can't have a farm without a barn.
But we're looking at historical restrictions on both barns. And the house?
Yes. To make sure that they stay intact and visually, you know, the way they are now.
Yeah, apologies, we should have introduced this earlier in the presentation, but this, this might be easier to everyone get the orientation, but, so, all of the, I guess, tones which are in an orange or red color on this map are town-owned. So the portions that have the red crosshatch line here are subject to the APR restriction and subject to the Bransfield lease. Those portions which are highlighted in yellow are portions which, really, the conversation we're having tonight, and the conversation we had last meeting, to talk about, what are the community's objectives, what are the community's criteria? Those, that's, those are decision processes that still need to continue, and they need to have a resolution. So what we're hoping is that the discussion that has been documented, which I just shared with you, the discussion which we're continuing this evening, will then be reflected back to town leadership, and they can use that to think about how to frame those future decisions for the portions which we've highlighted in yellow here. And as was just described, there's, you know, more detailed considerations, it's not to say that the red-hatched APR/Bransfield lease areas are completely off limits, there might be some way to have some sort of partnership there, but we know that yellow portions, there still needs to be decision. What we also hear in some of the comments and see in this process is that it would be nice to have an overall vision for how all of this works together, and then how that overall vision is informed by these community objectives and outcomes that you'd like to see. So that hopefully helps orient people a little bit to the conversation we're having as well. And in the, the comment I made about this, the process and the overlap of the process as being a little complicated, I think the more succinct way to say what I was trying to articulate is that the APR restrictions and the fact that they were not in compliance did apply, did place a time constraint and pressure on the decisions that needed to be made. And I feel like now that that has been resolved, the town of Littleton and the community and the leadership have an opportunity to maybe take, take a moment and actually feel like, what is it that we want to accomplish on the other portions which don't have that time-sensitive pressure that the APR lands do? Or did? The time-sensitive pressure has been alleviated. So let me go back, and don't be scared by the amount of slides I'm skipping, but we tried to summarize the community feedback that we heard in an evaluation matrix, and these are the types of things that we'll be pulling together. I've described this to you, the objectives are the desired results, the criteria, those measures, to evaluate how well the objectives are met. We had described in the previous meeting some shared objectives which we heard, which have been mostly, for the most part, I think, confirmed by the survey, but you'll see that these were, from the community's perspectives, priorities which are much lower on the list. So I don't think the objectives that we had heard from our conversations prior to the March meeting are out of the consideration of the community, but they are a lower priority from the community. So if we update the community objectives with a bullet list from the community's perspective, from what we saw in all that feedback and information we just had, this is a more aligned list with the community's objectives. So an opportunity to recognize, honor, and return the Shoba praying Indian stewardship of the land, the long-term sustainability and viability of the stewardship and agricultural uses of the land. And you can see, you can imagine how these objectives could apply to all portions that were on that map. Fulfill the promises to honor the legacy of the land, Littleton's agricultural history, the role of apples, comply with the APR requirements, which is basically a checkmark now that that is done. Restore, protect, maintain as orchard fruit bearer. There are potentially ways, even in Bransfield's lease and portion of land, that a small section of that type of pick-your-own, fruit-producing area could still occur. And then making portions available for public access use for passive recreation, and again, I think those opportunities exist as well. The ones I'm highlighting here in bold are the ones that I think are more, the most directly addressed by the current lease with Bransfield. The others that are not bolded here have been left unaddressed as of yet. I guess we could, yeah, sure.
That last bullet, what about the lease makes that, the leased land available for public access and passive recreation? That is not addressed by the lease, correct?
I was thinking more in the aspect of the small portion that's, would be potentially pick-your-own orchard, is the type of public access that was requested in the community feedback, but if there are other, I'm not sure if...
But you're right, there is no expectation that the orchard as leased will have public access.
Bransfield's management plan has, like, a walking trail around the perimeter, I believe.
Okay.
So.
All right, so.
But, but not a free-for-all. Like, you know, he obviously doesn't want people just walking through his farm willy-nilly, so.
Nor would I. I would just maybe question the bolding on that, other than that little bit around the edge, so, thank you for that. And then, secondly, Josh, if I could just, by your norms, ouch you a little bit on the earlier comment about having addressed the short-term, the short-term time restrictions, I think we should recognize that that was addressed by creating a 20-to-30-year hurdle for the NPI to regain access to some of that land. The short-term hurdle, you're correct, but it's worth acknowledging that it actually removed the short-term hurdle and increased a 30, introduced a 30-year one, or 20 to 30. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
Yeah, so, at risk of really seeming stupid, I just haven't heard anyone say, this person, this company, that the land's been leased to, because I wasn't at a recent meeting. What are they doing with it? Are they, just, what are they doing?
I'll give you a 30-second version. So John is a, he's a tree, he grows trees, arboriculture, is that arboriculture, is that the right word? Anyway, he grows trees in giant pots, they're all native, he doesn't use pesticides, herbicides, fungicides. They are intended for landscaping around here, then they obviously don't need any special treatment in order to survive. It's an opportunity that is booming, because a lot of people are moving to native plants. There are a lot of native plants that can't be transplanted easily, and he has a system of giant pots which are transportable. So what he's going to be doing is literally putting, making soil, like bringing in wood chips and making soil, filling up these giant pots, planting trees, letting them grow for two to six years, and then selling them.
Okay.
Thank you. And also, his other, other parts of his plan include restoring native habitat, restoring native trees, building food, permaculture food gardens. So he wants to grow pawpaws and blueberries and raspberries, all native, and do other things like coppicing and windrose, and a variety of native, not native, but natural alterations to the terrain to make the land more productive, and return it closer to what it should be as native land, instead of a, an orchard, which is a really chemically intensive, sort of like, not a very nice place for flora and fauna.
Thank you.
That was more than 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
No, I needed to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, our apologies, we, we know that there's an unevenness in terms of how involved or not involved people are, so we have skipped some important things, so just continue to clue us in if we feel that you've missed something. So we did want to pause here and just, we've been talking about it some, but just hear your reactions in the room to the community objectives that have been recorded here, that we presented back to you, and do they, do they fit with your understanding? Are there any adjustments or reactions to them? Yes.
What does it mean to say, what does it mean to say that the NDI won't have access for 20 to 30 years? Why is that, and what is it about?
Yeah, so on, on the portions of the property which have that, that had the red hatch, the APR-restricted areas that are under the lease, if one of the outcomes desired by the community is to see the land returned in some way, either as a steward or returned in ownership to the Nishoba praying Indians, then that lease would be an obstacle to that type of outcome. There's potential to have an outcome like that, not defining exactly how that outcome might be, I don't think that's necessarily our role, but to say if that type of outcome is desired within the Shoba praying Indians on some other portion that wasn't in the APR-restricted red hatch, it could still occur on those properties. But for those portions, it would be an obstacle to that outcome. portions, it would be an obstacle to that outcome.
That was one of the main objectives that you should keep in mind.
Correct.
So that isn't anything to pay much attention to?
I would say that's where the difficulty of these overlapping processes has is really coming to show. Other thoughts or reactions? Okay, we're gonna do the same on the community objectives. And so the, sorry, the community criteria. So these were criteria that we had presented at the last meeting that were from our initial conversations. And they were very focused on the types of conversation that we had been having to that point, which is about the commercial agriculture as a focus on the property. And so you see, you're seeing a theme here that there was processes underway that were focused on the commercial agricultural aspects of the land and the community's desire in that same timeframe has been growing in a support for the Nishoba praying Indians. I think those two things are happening, were happening in parallel.
Can I say something to that in regards? I attended a lot of those meetings and brought up the concern and the importance of the Nishoba praying Indians being a part of this process and being on this land back when the Orchard Working Group started getting back together after that failed lease. So it's not like this is a new concept that people are that all of a sudden got a support. I've been at meetings consistently bringing this topic up. And it has, and even though they were a part of the initial, you know, interest of do you want to lease or fund? And then they also were a part of the, what is the RFP process? So they've been a part of this process for well over a year, two years, or however long it's been going on of recent. So.
Appreciate appreciate that clarification and expansion of our of our context. So again, example criteria that we have seen, these were criteria from the lease, which was the resulted in the Bransfield lease. This was from the RFP, which was released in September of last year, 2024. And so you can see that these these were very focused on those agricultural, commercial agricultural aspects of the property. And if we shift to community criteria, which are more responsive to the feedback we heard from the community at the last meeting and the through the survey responses, you can see that the the shift here, which acknowledging that it was years in the making and a part of the process before our involvement, is number one, criteria indigenous connection to the land, acknowledging and support for the Nishoba praying Indians, planning to monitor activity closely with clear metrics and benchmarks, experience with long term sustainable farm management and native crops and plantings with restorative land practices, plan to engage the community and history on the property, and minimizing impacts to resources, views and neighbors. This included things like traffic impacts or noise impacts and mitigating those. So these were items from the community criteria that make it clear that a different type of outcome may be preferred. So this was putting those criteria into more of an evaluation matrix. And we were thinking about in this option one column, thinking about other portions of the property which we have not filled in, that might be other options. But in option one, thinking about how potentially the Bransfield lease may be response, have the opportunity to be responsive to some of the criteria. And it's doesn't, I guess it shows up okay on the screen. But some of the, there's a heavier stroke on planning to a plan to monitor activity closely with clear metrics and benchmarks. I think that opportunity is built in to the lease of Bransfield. Experience with long term sustainable farm management, native crops, plantings, restorative land practices. I think as was just described in their approach to the property, that's squarely accomplished and accommodated in that lease. Potentially the the criteria of minimizing impacts to resources, views and neighbors, like that can be accommodated, maybe not from all property adjacencies or perspectives. But I think there's, so we've put a lighter tone there. So it might be some impacts, but not, it's not the worst possible outcome for sure. And then there's potential in the continuing discussion with acknowledgement and support for the Nishoba praying Indians, even on the Bransfield properties to come out, they express an openness to a partnership as on those pieces of the property as well. So again, that's not resolved and concluded, but is potential as an opportunity there.
I would add, he has said he very much wants to be an educator and an outreach. So I think you could put a gray check mark by the second to last one as well.
On plan to engage
Yeah, engage community. I'm not not history necessarily, but he's he's eager to talk about native plantings, arboriculture, sustainable practices, et cetera.
And Josh, I just, I question, yes, there is a plan to monitor the farm activity, but I'm not sure how closely and is not clarified and clear metrics and benchmarks. Those, you know, in our conversations, haven't been spelled out.
It hasn't been implemented.
Yeah.
That there's a plan to make a plan.
We're waiting.
I know. I'm working on it.
So that hasn't happened yet. So I would just.
Yeah, we could amend that to also be gray in tone as it's not fully resolved. That's a good point. Other thoughts on how this feedback from the community resolves itself in terms of an evaluation matrix?
If I may, I don't, I don't mean to sort of argue with Matthew about the point, but the community impact on that is to engage the community and history on the property. If you're not doing both, I wouldn't call that a check mark.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
All right. So, yes.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm missing is, you know, this, it sounds, it seems a bit like a to do list. And it's sort of like, whose name or department goes with these things, you know, who's going to be responsible for what? So is that even in the workings? Is that something you guys even are going to have anything to do with it? Or that just comes back to the town and the town has to sort that out? But it just seems to me this is all kind of, you know, vague and dreamy unless it has a person's name and, you know, the accountability, who's going to be responsible for this? And when are they going to report on the progress and blah, blah, blah. So that's, that's, that's what I'm seeing.
So, so my name is Matthew Nordhaus, and I'm going to be responsible for monitor activity closely with clear metrics and benchmarks. I've already committed to that.
Thank you. Right there, yeah.
It's actually a good, a good segue into the next portion of the meeting that we'd like to have to where we talk about concretely with your feedback, what what is, what kind of more detailed outcomes with specific potentially responsibilities would you like to see on the portions of the property? So thank you for discussing and reflecting on the objectives and criteria. It sounds like you all are supporting the fact that, you know, your neighbors have have weighed in in this way. And we've reflected that back to you appropriately. But we want to shift to some of those details with the process moving forward. So there are a few things which, not completely setting aside the APR portions of the property, but focusing on the other portions of the property which do have substantial processes and decisions continuing and need need to be continued. So defining, as Matthew just suggested, monitoring, monitoring for the land, the criteria and metrics for success, what triggers corrective action, we will ask all of you for feedback to help inform that if you would have any thoughts about it. We have received some feedback, by the way, in the previous meeting and survey responses, and we'll be compiling those in that same answer. Having an inclusive discussion with the show of praying Indians and how the contours of that work might be framed. And we invite your additional thoughts and feedback. Again, we have a lot of feedback that we've already gathered. But if you have additional guidance, we would love to record that. The use of the land not subject to the lease, of course, is a focus. We've mentioned briefly historic preservation restrictions, if you have thoughts about that. And then we've touched on this in the conversation, too, just the overall vision for how all together. And we've picked up pieces, bits and pieces, and we can articulate that vision through our summary memo. But if you have specific thoughts about what is, what's the through line for each of these portions of the property and how they work together, we'd love to hear that. So we're gonna shift to the maps again in a moment, but wanted to think of, just pause first on the idea of monitoring the land and the criterion metrics for what would trigger corrective action. If anyone has thoughts about that, we'll take notes for for, yeah.
I'm wondering what might be helpful, especially for folks that are just joining the conversation, is to explain a little bit more of a difference between the APR land and the non APR land, because there's land without restrictions and then there's land under conservation. And I'm wondering if that jurisdiction may come into play as to what type of monitoring and criterias are going to be needed for the management of those lands. Also, I'm wondering, too, because it will be on town meeting in May, I believe, if it's moving forward with the Lot 6, the division that we may need to, as a group, just talk about that as well, just so that folks have an understanding of how that might come into play with this whole conversation, too, please?
Yes. Sure.
I can do a brief overview. So the the hatched areas are the APR areas. MDR will do an annual, will do an annual review to make sure that we are in compliance. My intention and the select board's intention is to hire a hire a professional to come and monitor based on criteria that we all decide and based on the management plan that John has provided us. And this is a common thing that is often done for conservation restrictions. They do an annual review of the land. They come and survey it. They check out all the criteria, all the, all the conditions, and they present a report. So we have not found someone to do that yet, although I'm already talking to MDR about it. And we have not determined what the criteria are, but that is definitely in in the process. Field 1, 2, and 7 were purchased with a grant from the state in 2000. And as a result, they are, they were called self help at the time. I think it's it's under Article, Chapter 97 of the Constitution. It's very restrictive. The the terms of that grant mean that it can never be leased, can never be sold. And it is essentially in conservation. So we are able to enter into a long term management agreement with someone, but that's the most that the town can do with that, with those, those, those lands. And they could be used for agriculture, or they could be used, but they can't be, they're, they're restricted. They can't be built on. They can't be developed in any way. And I don't think they can be subdivided. Field 6, so Field 5 is wetlands. I don't think anything can be done there. Field 6 is owned by the town. It is not restricted right now. It is going to be divided roughly in half. And the southern half is going to be taken over by the Conservation Commission. There's gonna, well, if if it passes a town meeting, because the Conservation Commission wanted to have control over that portion because it's rife with invasives and it's a very sensitive watershed area.
So just to add a little bit to what Matthew said, the APR land will be monitored and has to be monitored and it has to be agriculture. The other lands, the 1, 2, 6, and 7, we don't have to do anything with. We, I mean, we can leave them as native tree. We can leave the, I think, 2 and 7 have apple trees on them now. We can just let them go forever until they die or something happens to them. We can turn it into conservation land like Sarah Dubblet. We can have someone actively farming it. As Matthew said, 6 is going to be subdivided. The piece that the town controls has no restrictions on it. We can do whatever we want with it. It's wood, mainly wooded. We can have it farmed. We can have it trees. We, so the question is, what does everyone want to see done with that? And then, once we know what people want, then we can determine how to monitor that plan. Once we have someone that want, we find someone that will implement what the town is asking for.
There's just a hard piece about Lot 7. That's the parking lot?
No.
Is that?
It's not a parking lot.
Is, I thought the parking lot was part of Lot 7.
Part of it is.
For, part of it, for the Sarah Dubblet parking lot across from, so that's just, just so that folks know, have a reference. Yeah.
And that's not the same as the Sarah Dubblet.
It is Lot 6.
Correct.
It's on town land, but it's a parking lot that's used for the state to access materials in Sarah Dubblet.
Sarah Dubblet is controlled, owned or controlled by the Conservation, Littleton Conservation Trust, not by the town.
So maybe I'll just keep this map up on the screen and cycle through some of the questions that, if you have specific feedback for. But the first was, if you have thoughts about the monitoring of the property, the town's monitoring of the property, which is separate from MDR's monitoring of the property, what types of criteria, what types of triggers, what types of actions would you like to see in the town's thinking as we, as they put together a plan for that and bring on a partner for that monitoring effort? That would be an annual process. And where, what, any thoughts about details of how you'd like to see that framed?
Well, I just, you know, I'm just working off of what I know. So like, what I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but 6 is slopes down to the pond, right? And and that's, you know, that's going to be really important for a view. So, you know, if we want to talk about 6, you know, area 6 must maintain view. All right. So I'm just like trying to state the obvious. If 7 has been used for parking, you know, there has to be parking. So, or an area that can be used for parking. So if if it's not there, then that needs to be a consideration so that, you know, people can show up for a talk or a presentation or something at at Sarah Dubblet or anywhere else. I mean, I like to think in terms of, you know, events, you know, and gatherings, like, I think the town is seriously lacking in, you know, pavilions and things that where people could out gather for an outdoor gathering. So I don't know if that makes sense for any of this, but I'm just gonna kind of throw that out, you know, like a roofed structure that you could use in in nice weather and people bring and with picnic tables, you know. I mean, there's very little of that available. And it's important.
So both neither 6 nor 7 would be included in this monitoring because those are not part of the APR land. So 7 is conservation land that's that's self help. And 6 is owned by the town and is not, neither of them are part of the lease that John is has signed with us. So what we're, what we're talking about right now is the criteria by which we monitor John's progress year over year, how he complies with the APR and his management plan.
Oh, I thought we were talking about these other areas.
Yeah, let me.
Confused. Because I thought we were talking about the
I need, I need a slide with both questions and maps.
Right now, we're focused on suggestions for monitoring.
But I've taken all your notes because your notes are, we're gonna, one of the future questions are what are other uses of the property. So everything you just said is a great for other use of the other portions of the property. In terms of monitoring, it is these hatched red portions. And I think the types of ideas that we're looking for are things that you wouldn't want to know, like if you notice something going wrong. to know, like if you notice something going wrong on the property, what are the types of things you would want that monitor to be picking up on? Or issues or challenges? What types of things should they be looking for year after year that would then place Bransfield on notice that they need to fix some act, fix some way that they're doing things on their portion of the property? So what, what types of things is, would it be, I don't know, noise? Or like, what are the types of things that might trigger a, a response, that you would like to see the town be responsive to in terms of way, the way the, that Bransfield is operating on these red hatched portions? But we will get to you. We will, we'll get to what you were saying.
That's if you have some commercial vehicles, trucks, just except.
So figuring out maybe a, a level at which excess, like excessive is more objective, that we can, that might take a year or two to figure out in terms of where that level is, but, so traffic would be?
Traffic.
Traffic, yes. Thank you. Yeah, let's go rapid fire.
General aesthetics.
General aesthetics.
If you're doing something that looks like junky or something, that would be really objectionable.
Yep.
The use of pesticides or anything else that's going to degrade the land.
Great.
Well, a lot of that depends on what's in your lease agreement. But one of the things that Matt had said last time, which I think was right on target, I think is good, is that you don't have experience in land use. So that's why, you know, you said having a third party do it. But in town, there are apartments groups that do have some use, some experience in land use. The Conservation Commission, being that in particular, and the model you're suggesting is an annual review. So I would, whoever you hire for that annual review, and there are some good ideas of what adjacent towns use for something similar, I would think you would want that vendor, whoever you have, working with the Conservation Commission, because they speak the same language, they have the same knowledge, they have insight of what's going on, they go to concerts, figuring out how to do this stuff, and how to fix it when it's wrong. So I think ideally you'd want, even though it may come out of the selectmen, you, or select board, you, I think you want the Conservation Commission agent to go out with those people, and they can have conversations. What happens to those monitoring events? Is there good discussions happening with the person who's the farmer that's being leased to, and the people in the town and the objective monitor about what the future plans are? Does that comply? Does that make sense? And after all that's done, then distill it, then report to the select board. But, you know, you have people that already do some of this stuff, and you should use them, and otherwise you're excluding them, and they, they do have knowledge and capability. Select board has a lot of responsibility, has everything, and you may be experts in some areas, but not in all areas. So I, I think that makes sense to do that. As far as someone monitoring it, I think someone that you trust and have a relationship with, and as I pointed out before, in the town act, and there's an active farm area, and they have Severn Valley trustees, the staff, regional land trusts doing that, and they have good experience. We also have experience with Severn Valley trustees raising funds for conservation land, such as 5,000 for the Yap Land. They own some lands in town, such as the Smith Land. And recently, I went to a state conference on conservation, and there was example given by Severn Valley trustees and the pro bono lawyers showing all the record keeping they have. They really know what they're doing, and they prevailed, because someone did go outside of what the arrangement was, and they were able to rectify it without litigating. So I mean, that sort of expertise is hard to come by, and you, you have it already with Severn Valley trustees, so they should be primed towards the top list to, to consider. Certainly consider other folks, but you want someone you trust, you have a relationship with. So, anyway, that's the pitch there.
I agree, and also, Mdar is going to be doing an annual review as well, they do every year. They forwarded me the last 24 reviews that they'd done just recently, so I could look them over. So I think like a combination of Mdar, the Conservation Commission, and the third party would be a good trio.
And if the selectmen want to blow up a lot.
Right. I'm not going to be making any decisions. Like, I mean, I'm going to be, I'm not going to be there, I'm not going to be evaluating anything. I'm going to be, I'm going to be basing any decisions that I make on the professional opinion.
Well, you'd be learning.
Yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts? Thank you. Yeah?
Yeah, yeah. I get a less impact to animals, the wildlife, because it is next to Saratoga Forest, which is a nature reserve. And animals are used to having that free range of that land, and now all of a sudden they're not. So I'd really like to understand what the impact of the animal wildlife is going to be. And that's also, yeah, in terms of his management plan, he's speaking of growing certain vegetation that he'll be cutting, and I'm just wondering if that can be done in succession? Because he's inviting a place for all this wildlife, and then a portion of it is going to be cut to harvest. And so that if that, the wildlife could be taken into consideration for the impact. As from what I'm understanding, that's not his main commercial production. I think that they're producing a way for that. I'm concerned about, because what he explained, I don't know if this will eventually do, John said that he was going to be using landscape fabric around the potted trees. So I'm concerned just how water runoff is going to be on that. I know that's supposed to be typically more level areas. I'm kind of thoughtful about how, if he's going to be leveling that soil with bulldozers, or is he just going, you know, or is, like, how intensive is the leveling work going to be on that?
Like erosion, erosion control, like make sure we check for any erosion issues, for example?
Well, not just erosion, but water in itself and stormwater runoff.
Yeah.
Neighbors have already spoken about how water runs off of that property, and because it's on the hill. And so there could be just stormwater runoff issues, whether it actually moves wood chips in soil, or it just moves on something. Yeah. Also, how he's managing his soil building production, because it can catch on fire. So we want to make sure it's not happening. And so that his, he's not, he has says that he's not doing large amounts, but this is for 20 years. But I think that that's something that's important, and that's definitely an issue. Also, I want to know, and part of our monitoring is, is his involvement with the Nishoba Prairie Indians. Is he developing a relationship? Are they having access to the land? What is his historical acknowledgement and honoring? And what impact is he having on the community? Whether it's positive, negative?
Community, like in terms of sentiment, or just relationship with the community? How might you define that a little bit more? Impact on the community?
Well, there's a lot of different factors. I mean, there's the monetary factor. You know, there's the aesthetics, there's, is he providing anything that the community is benefiting from? In terms of, is he providing a product that they can purchase to support? Is he providing education? Or, you know, then also, is he, is there noise? And there's more traffic? But what are the pluses and minuses of his presence in our community?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's excellent. And it, you, as you saw me taking some notes, if you don't want to make a comment, please do put some notes down, and we'll collect them and make sure they get in the right spot.
I think along with the, and the Conservation Commission, the Littleton Conservation Trust has a lot of experience in terms of monitoring and building and being sustainable, and they should be included.
Thank you.
Is he, is he, is this company, is he going to, does he live in town? Or does he have properties in a lot of different locations?
His, his main current property is in Stowe, and he doesn't live in town.
Okay.
And also Lincoln.
Has one in Lincoln, too. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, because I think, you know, I mean, I think it needs to be thought through, but I think if, if we're talking about a relationship with the town, is like, you know, maybe this is something that could be worked, kind of coordinated with Conservation Commission, you know, an event or whatever. But there should be, you know, events, there should be some, you know, informal and maybe also formal, but at least informal situations where people can meet this guy and have a conversation. And.
Also, of course, you'd be.
I, I think that the annual, I think that the idea was that, you know, there would be an, after the annual inspection monitoring report was presented to the select board, John would be there, as well as the person who created the report, and there would be an open discussion about what happened well, what went well last year, what didn't go well, what things do we need to change?
Okay.
It should be posted.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a regular open select, I would assume, a regular agenda item on an open select board meeting.
So I guess what I would say, I mean, I think that's great, and that sounds formal, but I think there ought to be some informal situations, particularly, you know, around the time when there would be, you know, harvest, or where there'd be stuff for people to see, and, and you would do it on the, you know, on the land or at the place that, that, you know, it, there should be a way for townspeople to show up and like shake the guy's hand and see what he's doing, which is not necessarily a formal meeting.
Great, thank you. I do, let's do one more, and then I do want to move us on to the next part of the conversation.
I'd like to see the monitoring include the financial impact. So, including the cost of monitoring, what is coming in through Bransfield, what the town is spending on the land that he's leasing to, as a landlord.
Great. Thank you. Maybe I could have one of our team pick up the posted notes, so we just make sure that they get recorded in the right spot for that discussion around monitoring. And I do want to shift us, in the interest of time, I know that we all have other things we do other evenings besides talk together, but I want to shift the discussion to that inclusive conversation with the Nishoba Prairie Indians, and how, if there are anything, anything more specific you might like to talk about to help guide the town effort in that regard. And I know, as you saw in the feedback, that was a very high priority that we saw from the community, but, and those discussions are, are happening, but want to make sure that anything that you, if you have thoughts about how that should be happening, or details about it, or even a specific outcome that you would like to see, we'd love to get that recorded in this conversation as well. And just to, just to connect it again back to the, the map on the screen, too. So this, this could potentially be anywhere on the property, in the, the hatched red areas, it would be in conversation and partnership with Bransfield. In other portions of property, it would be in conversation and partnership with the town, either the select board or the Conservation Commission. If you have thoughts about any exact portion of the property, or just in general guidance Okay. I think what is clearly revealed in what we've shared tonight, and what was shown up in the conversation with the community thus far, is that they be engaged, period. And that, that's what is most critical, and I think that the commitment is there to do so. Let's move along to the next, which we started to talk about. But that's the use of any portion of the property not subject to the lease, and we have talked about that, but not all portions of the property. And I think specifically, we haven't yet talked too much, or heard from you all too much about the house, for example, would be one thing that might be interesting to hear from you all. And maybe the other half of the portion of the property that's not being contemplated for the Conservation Commission in what's notated here as 6. Any thoughts about specific areas of the property, specific outcomes that you might like to see?
I'd like to start by just saying for all of them, all of the land that's not subject to the lease, we've seen from the input that you've presented already tonight, a clear front runner of what the community thinks is the most appropriate use for that land. And that even many of the items that were not the number, so the number one was obviously restoring it to the NPI as much as possible. But many of the other ones can be achieved by restoring it to the care or control of the NPI as well. But most importantly, I think, because the public sentiment is so clear about what is desired, that each parcel should have its own evaluation to say, how can we achieve those goals of getting the NPI involved as much as possible, whether it's co-stewardship, co-management, or land back? How soon can we, what can we do toward that goal now? And if not now, when? And have a progression of each? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. It's thoughtful. Any others? Yeah.
Earlier this morning, I did send out a memo to various people, selectmen and town manager, Conservation Trust, Conservation Commission. Certainly, we focused on the southern part of Number 6, the land that the Conservation Commission would like to take over. And that has been the thought right from the beginning, 1999, when the grants were written, and the town had purchased this land. So just to address a little bit about the idea of pavilion, the land is a wet meadow. It is not the type of land for a pavilion. You know, people think of Niceneau, and think of some fancy pavilions, maybe by urbanized area, Boston waterfront. That isn't the type of place, it can't support that. So it's wet now, so that should be passive recreation. People have had weddings there and so on, but that's also passive, doesn't need a structure. But you should also connect that across the street to Saratoga Forest, through where the parking lot is in Number 7. That is, was funded by a self-help grant, now referred to as a land grant. You need some connectivity, you need a corridor to connect it, so people can be in Saratoga Forest and go over to there. Also, there are other lands that have been acquired by the self-help grant process, 1 and 2. There are trails through there. Those also should be transferred to the Conservation Commission for conservation. So even though it's honored through self-help and it's quote "protected," it better stewed and maintained by the Conservation Commission, working with the town. But once again, this is their area expertise. So I've tackled both the southern part of 6, which is unprotected, but the case has been made, it should go to the Conservation Commission, this town meeting should approve it. There were objections raised last minute at the last town meeting, so Conservation Commission diplomatically withdrew it. So I think everyone's on board of that currently. I talked a little bit about the parking lot, which is in 7, under self-help. That should be conservation. So there's, you know, connectivity and same usage. I talked a little about 1 and 2, but also not shown here, part of the Morrison Orchard perch, was a little bit further north. the Cobb conservation land, owned by Conservation Trust and the Conservation Commission. And that's a fundamental part of trails that lead down towards Saridoble. So what I'm suggesting is that we've opened this up, you know, from the beginning, people have discussed this, but it's always a different board of selection, and it gets forgotten and it doesn't renew. While we have the current board of selection, four elections, while everyone's in agreement, we need to solve this. Essentially, a selectman, Conservation Trust, Conservation Commission should go and walk it and have an agreement on it. And not this town meeting, but the fall town meeting have worn articles to turn those parcels over to the Conservation Commission.
They're already under the control of the Conservation Commission. One, two, and seven, the Select Board cannot do anything with without permission of the Conservation Commission. We cannot include them in a lease without our management agreement. They're under the control of the Conservation Commission. We have been told that by Town Council.
Right, but they're not owned and managed.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. We can't, they're under the control of the Conservation Commission. The Select Board has no authority to do anything on them. We cannot enter any agreements. They're under the control of the Conservation Commission, just like six will be.
You're talking about the self-help parcels.
The self-help parcels are under the control of the Conservation Commission.
Yes, I know, but you're only talking about the self-help parcels. The Morrison Extension, which is thirty acres, not shown here.
That's not, that's not even in any of these discussions.
We're not discussing anything about the. That is part of the Morrison property.
It's not, it's not on this map, Don. I don't want to, no, like, that's over by the App property, it's not here. It's not part of this, this thing that we're talking tonight, it's not part of the lease. So I think that, like, adding that into the conversation is just gonna.
I would like to complete what I'm trying to say, okay? It is part of the Morrison estate that was purchased in 1999, and for a long time, there had been discussions about it should be transferred to the Conservation Commission and different Select Board members.
Okay, but we're not talking about that tonight, that, that's not on topic.
And so why are you saying it's not part of the topic? It's part of the Morrison property.
It's not, it's not included in the lease.
So when is that going to be done? It's been twenty-five years.
I don't know, but we're not talking about that tonight. We're not talking about that extension.
You should be.
Don, let's shift, let's respect the community norms. So what I would like to know is, one, two, and seven, let's just focus on those three for a moment, and six falls under this a bit, too, but what do you want to see on that property? Conservation controls it. We could let it go feral and let whatever grows there, managing faces or not, on those properties, or we can turn it over to the praying Indians to have them manage it in some way, but they have to define what you want them to do on that property. Or do you want them to do native agriculture on that property? Or do you want them just to let the native trees grow? What do people want to see long-term? I understand we want to turn it over to the praying Indians, but no one's defined what that means for what they want the property to look like.
Right, so I, I'm just gonna say what I would like, which is that, you know, I've visited, you know, I've connected with the Acton, what Acton has done, say, through trail through time, all right? So one form that working with praying Indians might take, you know, I don't know how interested they're in, but it would be very satisfying to me if, you know, the, the, some of the detail, the history, the pointing out, you know, the, you know, remarkable spots and why they're remarkable in terms of, you know, the native culture, native background, if that became signage that told a story, so that somebody could walk through these areas and it was like, oh, okay, you know, I get it, this is. So one example that, which I'm aware of, is that, you know, in Saridoble, Saridoble, you have these, these rock formations that were, are very spiritual situations that were placed in a particular way for a particular reason, and a lot of that has to do with overlooking the water. And so what you can actually see from locations, so that's just, that's an example of something that, you know, you gotta know that, and then you make sure that the view from the rocks at Saridoble, that was why they were placed there, that that view is kept clear. And wouldn't it be helpful if there was some signage so people could honor and respect that and see, oh, wow, okay, yeah, that makes a lot of sense? So, you know, I don't know, you know, the Nishoba praying Indians, how interested they are in something like signage and that kind of thing, but me, as somebody who appreciates that background, I would really like it.
Yeah, I was just wondering how the Nishoba praying Indians would come into this. I know the last meeting, there was someone here. I think we have to perhaps assign one or two people to do some outreach and try and find out what they would like to see or how they would like to participate.
Those conversations are already taking place.
I appreciate hearing from you, Mark, that you want to hear from us in the room what we want for the land, especially if we're going to have the Nishoba praying Indians manage the land. But I think for, as much as we'd like to say what we would like to see, I think honoring the ancestral land of the Nishoba praying Indians is to allow the space for them to have the freedom of their relationship with the land as they feel that is true and authentic for their tribe versus us telling them how they should relate to the land. And for me, what I would like for that land is to have the, the ancestors of those that took care of that land and had a relationship with that land thousands and thousands and thousands of years ago, to have that opportunity, to have that freedom to connect with that land again as they feel that they need and would like. And that's what I think is in the best interest of the land.
So that's a, I'm not saying I'm opposed to any of that, but that goes contrary to what we're seeing on the other land where you want it actively monitored, right? To make sure that they're complying with our wishes. Now you're saying we're turning over the land to allow them to comply with their wishes, and our wishes are whatever they would like to do. And, and I'm, if that's what the town wants, then I'm fine with it, but I just want to be clear that we have to decide what we want as a town for them to do. And whatever you guys want, I'm okay with. The, the trails is a great idea, but that's more of a passive thing than an agricultural thing, than a spiritual thing. We need to decide what you're allowing them the freedom to do. We can pick from a wide range and we can decide, but we need as a town to decide what that is before we can go forward.
I'd like to respond. I think the difference in the monitoring is, is that there's APR land, and there's already a restriction on that, that the town agreed to upon its purchase with MDR, and so therefore there is monitoring on that. And if there's, if we're going to retain ownership and hold the deed of the land, then there needs, yes, I would think that there would be an opportunity for conversation with the Nishoba praying Indians, but in terms of, you're asking what's the difference between the monitoring, well, it's APR land versus land that.
Conservation land.
It's conservation land.
It's essentially.
So there's already set guidelines on what can be done on that property. Now, is that enough for us in town, and is that something that the Nishoba praying Indians are willing to work with to begin with?
I, I think that's actually exactly the question we're asking, is what does the town want? How much control do we want to give? Are we okay with absolutely anything that doesn't violate the conservation restrictions on that land? Right? Like, like, I know, I think that's what we're asking, you know?
Me personally, yes.
I know, yeah, you, you expressed that earlier. Yeah, I took the mic to make comments very simpatico with what Kristen was saying, is if our intention is to restore the NPI to their ancestral lands, it's not appropriate for us to dictate what occurs there. But that's not to say that there can't be overlap with their goals and our goals. So I would suggest that the, and we didn't have any comments about the inclusive discussion with the NPI a moment ago, because I think, I want to say this very politely, this room is not capable of, of deciding how we should have that inclusive discussion, but it has begun, and there are individuals that are doing that work, and I want to respect that. But what we really ought to have is the inclusion, inclusive discussion with the NPI removed from the wall and placed under use of land subject to lease so that those things can happen. The, the goals of the NPR, and I, I loathe trying to speak for them, but I know that their goals, as previously stated, is to restore the health of the land, and that includes, you know, indigenous properties in doing so. Those aren't at odds with conservation. We just have to be broad enough to think about what we want in terms of conservation and where it overlaps with them, because there's far more in common than there is different. And I really do respectfully object with the idea that we're trying to impose monitoring on the APR, because not only, as Kristen said, is it subject to the, the MDR restrictions and the law of that contract that we entered into twenty-four years ago, but also what we have seen here is that the presence of that lease is kind of opposite from what the town actually wants. So if we're doing a thing that we're forced to do, even though we don't really want to do it, of course we want to exert some control over that. If we were doing with that land what we actually wanted to do, I don't think we would really want to monitor it in the same way. Thank you.
One, one more topic. Actually, two more, sorry. We're getting short on time. Just wanted to see if there were any thoughts about the discussion around historic preservation restrictions on any portion of the property, particularly, it's been discussed for the portions of property with structures, the barns, the house, et cetera.
Hi, I'm on the Historical Commission in town, and we have some plans for the upper, for the upper house, the upper barn, and the lower barn, which I guess is part of the APR, but I'd like to hear people's opinions once I explain what we're planning. None, none of these buildings, none of these structures are protected under the APR, so at the moment, they could all be demolished and there's nothing we could do about it. Our commission doesn't think that's a good idea. We think all of these buildings, at least certainly the upper house and the lower barn, are kind of iconic parts of the orchard, that they're part of it, they reflect the history of it, they reflect the beauty of it, and we would like to preserve them and protect them. And there's ways we can do that. The, the way to do that with some legal clout, legal, legal protection is called a preservation, historic preservation restriction. So our commission would like to first hire a professional historic preservation consultant to evaluate the three structures, the three buildings, for historical significance, external certainly, possibly internal, and preserve some of the architectural and historical features that are historically significant. Then, after that evaluation, we would write a preservation restriction for each of the buildings that lists what we would like to preserve, and that would go to the state, and the Massachusetts Historical Commission would sign off on it, and then those buildings would be, at least those features of each of the buildings would be protected. So I guess I'd like to hear from people if you think those buildings should be protected, and, yeah.
Well, one of the barns are on the lease, right?
The upper barn, which is the large barn across from the house, is included in the lease.
So that would not be part of the.
No, it would be.
It would.
It can be, as long as the people who write the lease and, and the leasee, or whatever lease, the guy who has the lease, as long as everybody agrees to preserve these architectural features, then that could have that kind of protection as well.
And there is language in the lease that it is expected, we are expected to put a historical preservation restriction on that barn.
Let me just do a quick temp check on who would be in support of placing a historic preservation restriction on the structures.
I have a, I am at the barn, I'm concerned about the house.
Oh, so it's more nuanced, sorry. How about who would support a preservation restriction on the lower barn, down by Niag Hill Pond, or Niag Barn? So maybe about a little, little more than half the room looks like.
I just don't have enough information.
And how about the house? A little bit less than the lower barn. And how about the upper barn?
I mean, what's the, what's the other option if you don't do the historical preservation? What are you talking about?
Well, so, right now, the house and the barn are owned by the town, and so it's unlikely that the town would do any major renovations or changes. If we sell the house lot, for example, we, you know, whoever purchased it, it's, it's essentially a private residence, and they could do anything that was allowable within the zoning bylaws. So I think it's the intention of this Select Board to protect those visually, at least. And certainly, the barn is, is quite old, and I think it's a very emblematic of that property. The house is less old and has been added to a lot, but we still don't really want someone to come and knock it down and put up condos.
And one last comment on that. If, so currently, the town owns all of these buildings. If the town ever decides to sell the buildings, if, if while the town owns it, we put on these preservation restrictions, then any new owner in perpetuity would have to abide by these preservation restrictions and preserve the buildings.
Actually, can I ask a question?
So I'm Lindsay Randall from MIPC, but I do a lot of the historic preservation stuff. Since the town owns the land, would you also be considering applying for one of the MHC grants for the Preservation Projects Fund to help fund the rehab of the buildings?
That's a great idea. We haven't gotten that far along in the process, but that's a good idea.
I just want to put it out there that there is funding at the state. Some of it is matching, some of it is not. That could help with that when it is municipal-owned, so.
Thank you.
So I'm generally supportive of historic preservation for these, but I'm more familiar with the timing of state approval for conservation restrictions. How long does it normally take to get a historic preservation restriction through the state?
It can depend. I will say it is, if you did go for the, some of the matching grants and stuff for, to help fund some of the stuff that is usually a requirement, and the state will hold it, because the town usually, they won't allow the town to hold the restriction, but MHC, Mass Historical Commission would. Normally, I would say, would probably be like a year, year and a half process, depending.
It is similar.
Under current funding structures from federal government to the state Historic Preservation Officers, which is the SHPO, which is MHC for the state of Massachusetts, I don't know how that may impact going forward, that kind of stuff.
It might be a bit shorter.
But, but yeah, so, but the people there are really good, like Michael Steinets and stuff.
So, yeah, we have, last year, or a little, last couple of years, we've been working on a preservation restriction for another property in town, and it really only took about six months to get approval from the state for the preservation restriction.
I'm thoughtful about the restrictions, historical restrictions on the house, given the current condition that it's in, and how that would affect the cost to renovate the house with the restriction, and what impact that would have. Because if it is the whole, you know, if we're thoughtful about maybe providing that house for the Nishoba praying Indians, it's, you know...
house for the Nishoba praying Indians, it's, you know, or anybody, you know, what expense are we then adding on to because of this restriction?
So it's possible to only put preservation restrictions on the exterior of the house. That is one option. And then anyone could do whatever they want or need to do for the interior. I would like to have a discussion with town officials about whether we, how much it would cost to clean up the interior, whether we should, whether we just push that off if they want to sell the house on to the next owner. I don't, we haven't had that discussion.
So the evaluation of the damage to the houses, it's primarily the interior, the structure is sound, and that it would just need to be, all the interior surfaces would need to be gutted back to the studs and... So I think that we could probably place an aesthetic, external restriction on it and have almost no or very little impact on the cost to rebuild it in the same form that it is now.
Correct. Thank you.
Great, we'll try to abide by this, end on time. So I think it's appropriate to end, given all these moving parts, given the various dynamics on each of the portions of property, does anyone have a succinct through line of an overall vision that they'd like to posit to tie all of this together? Anyone want to take a shot at that? Like, what would be, what should be the overarching community vision? I think, we've seen clear suggestions within all the feedback that I provided that it would center on the Nishoba praying Indians, but I wonder if anyone has any thoughts about how this, how this all ties together?
So the one theme that I'm seeing that's common between John Brandsfield and the Nishoba praying Indians is they want to return the land as much as possible to its natural state, remove it from being an orchard, and turn it into a native food garden or using native means of agriculture to basically heal the land.
Return land to the natural state, heal the land. I think those resonate with a lot of what we've heard.
Well, I don't think I have your through line that you're looking for, but, you know, what's standing out for me is that, you know, we're talking about the Nishoba praying Indians and, you know, what do they want, what do they want? And it's a, it's a big, it's a kind of a blank in that, you know, so I, you know, and I know timing is also a cultural difference in terms of, you know, hurry up or let things, you know, develop in a different time perspective. But, you know, that's, that's my concern is, is just, you know, where, when, and how are we going to have a sense of, you know, where things are at with the Nishoba praying Indians, you know, even if it's like, maybe they want, you know, could you just put things on hold in a certain way for so many years to let us get, you know, grounded into the town, because I know some of them have only recently moved here, you know, I mean, whatever that is, but it's like, that's kind of where, what I'm sitting with is that there's this big unknown and that, you know, they're not in the room here, you know, have, you know, sounds like some people have been in, been with them, have had some direct conversations, but, you know, how, can we put, you know, is there some way we can get at least enough information to know what would need to be put on hold to hear more, you know, and is there some idea of that? Or is the, you know, the town going to have to just make some decisions based on guesses for some period, you know, of time that's what we can tolerate? You know, I don't know if I'm being helpful at all there, but there you go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Another shot at a through line, perhaps?
Yeah, actually, I do. I'm going to stand for this. Matthew talked about the healing of the land. I think it also goes into the component of healing of a community. Nagog Hill, if you look at it topographically and where it is, the land between the two waters, the historical component of the land, it was land that was set aside for the Nishoba praying Indians so that they could live harmoniously with the community of the colonists and the development of Littleton. And King Philip's War happened, the destruction, the trauma and the experience that has woven into the history, into the story of the land, the Nishoba praying Indians and those of Littleton. And we here of Littleton have benefited from that trauma with this, what we have today. We have this land that we're even having these conversations about because of the ancestors of the Nishoba praying Indians and how they related to the land. And then the decisions of the Morrisons, you know, to create the Apple Orchard, and then from the folks in town. And so there's some longevity here, and this is a real opportunity for an overall view of a through line, is us as a community deciding what are, what is true for us and what is, what do we say about us as a community, not only with our relationship with land, but with each other, with our history and for our future. These are decisions that we're making for the next seven generations. What do we want those generations to be looking back at at this time? And what do we want it to be saying about us as a community and what we're doing? And there is so many changes going on in a much larger scale in politics and our, but what are we here doing in Littleton where we can make a difference for ecology, our health, healing, and bringing back a community of people that have much to offer all of us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank this woman here, I didn't catch your name, Cynthia. It seems like a blank page to us. The NPI have ideas and visions and have expressed a desire to provide education and a way for townspeople here in Littleton and abroad to be able to come and learn what indigenous practices were and restore some, some more as much as possible, to demonstrate what a true Nishoba praying Indian village would have looked like and do it in the modern day. And you're absolutely right about the, the timing differences. It's really important that the town operate not quickly, but at the speed of trust with the NPI, and great strides have been made over the last six months in that way. They really only returned to our community just a little less than two years ago. Yes, some of us in the room know them very well, others in the room don't at all, and townspeople that aren't here certainly have no idea. So it's very important that that is done so that we don't put them in the spotlight in a way that's inappropriate and would be harmful to the relation. But, so I appreciate your recognizing the different time scales. That said, there's a great opportunity here, and I'm really, really encouraged that everyone in this room has focused on the possibility of what could be gained by doing these things. And no one has talked about anything being lost other than like development or things that are not even on the table here. So everyone in the room should be focused on what could be gained, and there's a lot to be gained by the through line that we're hearing about collaboratively working with the NPI to hopefully give them whatever level within the constructs we have to work within in order to restore them as much as possible to this small part of the original land that was set aside for them.
Great, thank you all for that, and I do think you've all touched on, you're much smarter than your facilitator here and have really touched on the through line and vision here, and will articulate your word to our final findings. I just wanted to summarize, and we have covered all this, we just didn't do it on the slides. Next steps for our process, so we will be compiling notes from this session. Been taking notes, we'll watch it back, make sure we've got it right. We will be compiling a memo which documents this discussion, the previous discussions, and the feedback from the survey. And then defining that memo in such a way that we hope that it's most useful to you as community members and to you as town leadership and others in the town who are leading these efforts. And we'll, you know, hopefully keep track of this process and work with you all as you continue along. For those who are not present in the room tonight or who are maybe watching at home, this is just a reminder that you have the ability to weigh in on the same questions, the discussion that we've had this evening, to provide feedback through this online survey. We will leave it open as we did last time for about a month. We'll, you know, probably, let's just call it May 15th is when we'll go ahead and close the survey, and then fold the results of the survey into the results that we just discussed with the memo. So we appreciate everyone's time and thank you for the discussion and really thinking about how this, the legacy of this property can be moved forward in the town with all of your help. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.[1787.87][1787.87][applause]